Ladies and gentlemen, I want to, first of all, I want to thank you for coming all the way out to Tiverton. I know that in the state of Rhode Island, that involves a big trek, and I'm certainly grateful that you made the trip all the way out here to Tiverton, Rhode Island. I want to welcome you to District 71, which is the House of Representatives district that I represent. I represent all of Little Compton, part of Tiverton, and part of Portsmouth. And I want to, first of all, thank you all very much for taking the time to come out here to be heard. The purpose of today's gathering, and I'm certainly not an expert in health care, I certainly will share with you my opinions on the health care legislation as it progresses, but I brought along with me a panel of experts that might be able to better provide some of the detail and some of the clarity that I think we need going forward in this debate. And I'm hopeful that today you'll take the opportunity to come up to this microphone right here, and I would just ask that you please identify yourself and let us know where you're from, and we're going to record today's proceedings and make sure that Congressman Kennedy gets a copy of the DVD that we create tonight, so that he can see exactly what you're thinking and exactly what the folks down here in Brantles tonight think. I also want to thank Brantles and the Tiverton PD and all the other folks that are participating to make this possible, and we've got a panel of experts. So a couple of things I wanted to just touch on briefly. You know, there are some guiding principles that I think that we all need to think about in terms of health care. And first of all, I don't think anyone can stand up and say that the current system that we have is perfect. The current system that we have needs work. We've had double-digit increases in the amount of insurance costs over the years. The health care system gets more and more expensive seemingly every year, and we need to do something to improve both the quality and the accessibility of the health care system going forward. To leave the system the way it is right now, I think, is a recipe for disaster. I have concerns about some of the ways in which Congress is going about that right now, but just for some quick guiding principles, one of the things that we talk about is universal access. I think it's important that we have insurance for all the folks that are currently uninsured right now, and we find a way to do that as Americans. I think we need to cover pre-existing conditions. One of the problems that people have is it's impossible to get insurance because of pre-existing conditions, and we can find a way to do that. The other thing is I think that health care needs to be patient-centered, and when I say that, I mean we need to maintain the privacy and sanctity of the doctor-patient relationship and make sure that the patient has the ultimate choice of both the plan and the doctor that they choose to see. Another one of the guiding principles, I think, is that families should control their own health care. The patient, not the employer, should own the plan, which would give portability. We need to modernize and direct assistance to low-income families to make sure that they have the same access to competing health plans. And we also want to make sure that each plan suits individual needs. We don't have one-size-fits-all solution. We've got to lower costs, and there are a number of ways that we can lower costs in the health care system, and I think we need to get about that business right away. Tort reform is one of the major ones that I think we need to get on top of. We also want to make sure that our health system has in place a way to reward folks that make healthy life choices, and reward them, just like you have good driver programs in insurance, reward folks that are doing the right things to keep the costs down. And I think we need to have competition among all of the various plans across state lines. By opening up that competition across state lines, what we do is we create a system in which health insurers can literally vie for the best deal, and you're able to find a plan that best fits your needs and not have someone tell you what that plan should be or should look like. And lastly, I think that we have tremendously high-quality medical care in the United States, and we want to make sure that it's the doctor and the patient and not some bureaucrat, whether it's an insurance company bureaucrat or whether it's a Washington bureaucrat, that determines the treatment. That should be the doctor and the patient. Now, some of the questions that I have about some of the plans that are working their way through Congress, and I've got a matrix up here, I'd be happy to show you, there are many, many plans working their way through Congress right now. There's the Chairman's Mark, the so-called Bacchus Bill, which isn't really even a bill. There are three versions of the House bill that have come out. There are several alternatives that have been filed by other representatives. Congressman Price has an alternative in, so does Congressman Ryan from Wisconsin. There are a number of alternatives, but some of the things that I find right now troubling about the ones that you hear the most about is that the public option where it squeezes out any private health insurance, and it leaves the consumer with less choice, and it basically, Congress rigs the competition with artificially low premiums and taxpayer subsidies, and employers will no longer get the tax break for providing employers' plan, and guess what? They'll discontinue the plan. And I think that's something we need to look at very, very strongly. The other thing I'm concerned about is mandates. Whether it's a mandate that's placed on businesses or a mandate that's placed on individuals, basically, it's a coercion. It's a way of forcing you to do something you may or may not want to do. The other thing is I'm very concerned about the systems going forward, that they don't necessarily do much to contain costs. And some of the costs that we need to worry about are to be, you know, basically brought down. And then there's, we need to, you know, find a way to reward providers that are doing a good job and reward doctors that are actually out there and are providing the savings that we need to medical care. As I said before, I've got a panel of experts, and I just ask that you kind of bear with me a little bit on the introductions. Hold your applause to the end. The first gentleman I want to introduce is an expert basically on the insurance industry. And we hear a lot from the provider side, and I think it's very important that we hear the perspective of someone who's built insurance plans and worked in the insurance industry for a long period of time and perhaps answered some of those questions about the impacts that some of these will have, and that's Joel Cooper. Joel is the Executive Vice President of USI New England. He's also a professor of business at Roger Williams University, and he's just been named as one of the insurance advisors to the governor's insurance office. So he understands the current landscape that we have, and I think he can show us what some of the problems that we have in the current landscape are and perhaps suggest some solutions to make that a little bit better system going forward. He's a smart guy. He's a graduate of Syracuse University. He's got a Master of Science from Florida State and an MBA from Nichols College, certificate in industrial relations from Holy Cross College, certificate of health consultant from the Blue Cross Association, and Health Insurance Associate, Health Insurance Association of America. So this is a guy who definitely knows insurance. Also with us, we have Bill Felkner. Bill is right here, the gentleman with the rather natty tie. Bill is the founder and CEO of Ocean State Policy Research Institute, and he's the coordinator of the Center Right Coalition and president of the Rhode Island Association of Scholars. Felkner was a board member for the Heritage of Rhode Island and the Charahoe Regional School Committee. He currently serves on the Hopkinton Town Council, so he had a long way to travel to get out here, and is a member of the Governor's Global Medicaid Waiver Task Force, so he can help tell us hopefully what some of the state implications of health insurance moving forward were. And last and certainly not least, we have with us Brian Bishop, and Brian is a fellow on regulatory policy from Ocean State Policy Research Institute and the Director of the Founder's Project, a constitutional law discussion panel. And very interesting, I would like to ask Brian at some point if he thinks there are any Fifth Amendment conflicts with forcing people to buy insurance. He's been active in regulatory policy and research for over 15 years and is often published in The Providence Journal, testified on environmental property rights and constitution issues at the Rhode Island State House. So if you could give our panel a round of applause. And at this time, I've asked each of them to just make a brief opening statement to try and kind of set the stage and maybe spark some of your interest for questions, and as soon as we get through the opening statements, we want to hear from you, because that's what this is all about, is hearing from you. So with that, Joel.
Thank you. Thank you for having me, everybody. What I'd like to do is serve as an expert in facts. We have a lot of different bills that have been introduced, and a lot of what's being said on the TV shows are distortions in many ways or misunderstandings. And what I want to do is not take a position at all, but try to help explain and educate you and the factual stuff that I know, and then you develop your own opinions. There's lots of good and lots of bad to some of these proposals, and like it was said, we have a lot of improvement to make. I see it every day. I consult for over 350 different corporations that provide health insurance throughout New England and in particular in Rhode Island. And yes, I did work up until the early 1990s for Blue Cross of Rhode Island. I understand some of the issues insurance-wise, provider-wise, hospital-wise, and I'd like to help you to understand the issues, and then you make up your own mind what you think you can support and you can't.
Thank you, Joel. I also just wanted to quickly point out that Mark Zaccari is here from the Rhode Island Second Congressional District. He's a candidate for Congress, and I just saw Senator June Gibbs walk in. And as I said, I also saw Senator June Gibbs walk in. Hi, June. Welcome. Bill?
Thank you, Representative. And my daughter bought me this tie, so I just want you to know that. You know, I'm very encouraged to see so many people here today to discuss this. This is a very difficult subject because, quite frankly, it's a moving target. The bill is changing constantly, and there's three main versions out there. And so, you know, we'll talk as much as we can to it, and Brian will be more specific on the regulations itself, but what I'd like to be able to bring to the table today is how it will impact Rhode Island specifically. If you're not aware, Rhode Island is one of two states that had a full global Medicaid waiver, Vermont being the other one, and they've already moved on down the road with it. But we have a global Medicaid waiver, which essentially is a block grant from the federal government, a five-year, $12 billion grant that gives the governor a great deal of latitude on how we can shape our Medicaid program. Obama's proposals for health care are to use Medicaid to expand the population that it will service, and that will have a direct impact on what we can do with the waiver, obviously. And so my position, the position of Ocean State Policy and several people around the country, is that while the rest of the 49 states are playing defense, Rhode Island is the only state that has an opportunity to play offense. The things that Representative Loughlin had mentioned, you know, empowering the consumer with choice, bringing competition to the table, transparency, information technology, these are all things that we can be proactive at. We can do it. We can be an example for the country. I often liken this situation to the welfare reforms of the early 90s. If you may recall, an education-first welfare system was status quo in the country forever. Governor Tommy Thompson in the early 90s received a welfare waiver. He designed a unique system, a welfare-to-work program, and it worked, and that system swept the country with the '96 Contract with America, which was eventually signed into law by President Clinton. And so I look at the Medicaid waiver in Rhode Island as our opportunity to set an example for the rest of the country. And so as we talk about things that we fear and opportunities that we see in the upcoming health care debate, I'll be able to try to show where in Rhode Island we can be proactive and move those forward. Thank you.
Thank you, Bill. Brian, it's all you. Brian Bishop.
How does this thing work? Yeah, that's, hey, there we go. You'll notice that I was worried he was going to make fun of my tie, so I chose a different attire. And it's a wonderful setting. It kind of looks like we're getting ready for an episode of So You Think You Can Dance. I mean, it's a beautiful house. Other than the Knickerbocker Cafe down near us, I don't know of a nicer place to spend an afternoon, but it's good to spend it on this subject. As someone who studies regulation and its effects, you know, I spent much of my time beginning looking at environmental regulations. And so as I began to look at health care, I almost felt like a fish out of water. But then words like mandates and rulebooks that, you know, are as thick as this table started to come in, and you find that there really is a place for people who look at regulations and how we react to them, you know, and whether they fit the culture, the American culture. I think that really, for me, is what characterizes this debate about health care. I think that we do have a strong sense in America that while we may be individualistic, that we also believe in a safety net. And the real thing that concerns me when I see mandates and ideas that everybody would be mandated to buy things, that what they could buy is going to be largely controlled and structured by the government, that's a great concern to me, but that's very different than saying that I'm concerned about. I think we would all like to see a safety net. The extent that we already, the one that we have is not efficient, that it's one that sometimes relies on emergency room care, you know, rather than providing access, I might not characterize it as universal coverage, but universal access, an ability for people to access, I think most folks would like to see, I believe, and please feel free to suggest otherwise, would like to see a safety net. They're very concerned with the notion that we might all be rolled into the safety net, rather than the safety net is really there to provide for a smaller number of circumstances that we certainly don't want to see go wrong. So that's the perspective that I bring to it, and I think I can add facts and figures to that as people ask questions.
Thank you very much, Brian. Well, ladies and gentlemen, this is your town hall meeting. This is your opportunity to be heard, and I would encourage you to not be intimidated, but to come right on up to this microphone here in the center. Is it turned on, Mike? You notice our mic guy's named Mike. Isn't that convenient? And feel free to ask some questions. The only ground rule I would ask is please just identify yourself, so we know who you are, and let's see if we can't get you some answers, and if we can't, we'll certainly push that off into the right direction.
My name is Joe Suza. I live at 49 Hancock Street here in Tiverton. We talk about people that aren't, that aren't insured. Now, I have a friend who's been a co-hacker his whole life. Didn't have any medical, couldn't afford $9,000 a year. He got sick. They thought it was hepatitis, because he has a lot of tattoos. Turned out, they treated him for hepatitis. Then he went on. Turned out, it was a thyroid problem. Now, he had to go on welfare, and I believe it was Rite Care that picked him up. He had no insurance. So the question is, who are the people who don't have insurance that can't get help? Because everybody I know who didn't have insurance went to the hospital and was treated. One other point I just want to make is I don't trust Congress enough to deal with I went on the computer before I left the house just to check the national debt clock. It was like $11.8 trillion. We know about Social Security, Medicare, Medicaid, all going bankrupt. I just don't trust Congress, and that's the biggest reason why I'm afraid of this reform, because I think it's just going to get worse.
Thank you. Thank you, Joe. Joe touched on a couple of different points, one of which I tend to agree with. I'm not sure I trust Congress to get this right either, but the other question he touched on was the characterization of the folks that are uninsured right now. And I know that I've heard two different numbers. I've heard a number of 47 million, and then I've heard a number of 30 million, and I think one accounts for illegal aliens to be included. That would be the 47. The 30 million would be non-illegal aliens, and that breaks down into different categories. One category is folks that have lost their job, and for whatever reason, because we have an employer-based system that's not portable, they don't have health insurance. Now, they might be getting a new job and picking up new health insurance. They might not, but for whatever reason, there's a certain number of people that are going to be in that category have lost their job and don't have insurance. Then there's another group, and they're largely in the 18 to 35, in some cases 25 to 35, of young people that are invincible and don't buy health insurance. And those are folks that have just, they're healthy folks that just don't want insurance, and those are the folks that a number of the bills that are in Congress would go after and force with a mandate. And the other thing I'm a little concerned about is in the congressional language, they refer to it as an excise tax or a tax on people that don't have insurance. To my mind, that's more of a penalty, right? And if it's a penalty in the United States of America, according to the Fifth Amendment of the Constitution, you're entitled due process. So that's the other group of folks that are uninsured. And so I think that's where the $47 million number comes from, Joe, to answer your question. And then the last group, I don't think I did mention, are the folks that have pre-existing conditions. And those are the folks that insurance companies just don't want to touch because they know they're very high-risk individuals. That's a group we need to deal with. We need to make sure that those people can find insurance when they need insurance. Who's got our next question? I can come around to you too, if you want. All right?
Hi. My name is Terry Gorman, and I'm with Rhode Islanders for Immigration Law Enforcement, and you just kind of gave me a little bit of a segue about the insurance for illegal aliens. Rhode Island is a state. You can go to any hospital in Rhode Island. You can be as illegal as you want to be, if there's such a thing, and you can get any kind of service you want. You can get mental health services, skin cancer services, you can have a broken thumb, a broken toe, whatever you want, and you're welcomed in. I just did a show with a lady that was in disguise that's an interpreter at a local hospital, and she said they keep track of every single penny that's spent on every single illegal alien in that hospital, but we're unable to find those things out. But I have two concerns, and one of them is, the way this is stated in this little missile that I received, says buried deep within the massive bill are efforts to provide for culturally and linguistically appropriate communication and health services. Well, what that means is we'll have to provide interpreters for every non-English-speaking person that resides in this country, legal and illegal. It would, never mind the cost of health care, that would totally bankrupt the system if that were required. And anybody can go in and check Sections 144, Sections 204, Sections 1222, and Sections 1224 of the bill. Spell that out.
You're referring to House 3200, I presume, right?
Yeah, I'm sorry. Yep. In House Bill 3200, those different sections of the bill. And one of them, and if people don't think this is scary, Section 1222 commences a Medicare program to provide free interpreter and translation services to each patient with limited English proficiency at all points of contact in a timely manner during all hours of operation. That's 24/7 we'd have to provide these services. And I don't know how many people know it, but currently in the United States that we deal with 302 different languages. So that means that Rhode Island Hospital and Memorial Hospital could possibly have to start dealing with all of that. And another concern I have that's in the bill is, right now, it's currently the law that if an immigrant comes here, they come here with a sponsor, and they're sponsored. Their sponsor is responsible for them financially and medically for the first five years that they're in the country. In this bill, they're going to get rid of that requirement. They're going to provide medical care for legal immigrants as soon as they get here. So the day they get here, this bill covers a legal immigrant, and that just shouldn't be, the sponsor should be responsible for that. But I suppose my big question is, what do you think we could do about that linguistically and culturally appropriateness?
You know, it's interesting. There's clearly a conflict between what is written in that bill and what is in immigration law. And we've seen this conflict. We saw it here in Rhode Island with the governor getting rid of interpreters for welfare recipients. I'm going to let Brian speak to the specifics of the law, because we've done the research on immigration law. We know it is required of the state of sponsors, et cetera. But the bottom line is, is that as a culture, and Brian mentioned this, it has to do with health care as well, our culture has decided that immigrants coming to this country are to be taken care of with a sponsor. They are not to be awards of the state, and again, I'll let Brian fill in details. I believe it's for a period of up to 10 years. And they have certain income requirements that they must maintain for that sponsorship of the immigrant. So for the bill to be written as such, either they are going to try to change the immigration laws or simply ignore it. But Brian, if you have the specifics on the immigration.
I think that one of the main problems is that the whole idea of sponsorship is something that's observed essentially in the breach. Now, maybe if we thought that they would pay as much attention to this new health care law as they pay to laws that are already on the books about sponsorship, then we wouldn't be worried, because, you know, if you like it, you let it apply, and if you don't. But, I mean, realistically, we're talking about, you know, very serious change in health care, and the thing that strikes me, you talk about, you know, seeing people at hospitals, and I believe, was it Frank, the general? Joe, sorry, who asked the first question, said, who are the, who are the people who don't have insurance in the sense that we would provide? If somebody goes to the hospital, we will provide care. We're not going to insist. And quite honestly, look, when you go to the bank, you know, there's not a law, but when you go to the bank, it might say, you know, "Do you want Spanish?", you know, when you're pressing the buttons on the thing. And I think most hospitals without a law, I mean, these are doctors. These are medical professionals. They're going to attempt to communicate with people. They're not going to, you know, intentionally shunt them aside because of a language difficulty. That's different than some kind of a rule about who has to be there to interpret. But one concern, and this is a concern that in many ways ironically is driving the question of having a large or a global health care solution, is the provision of these services in the hospital, right? The idea is, we do have a safety net, but that's not a very efficient way if our hospitals are clogged with potentially non-emergency circumstances. And so this, I do think this is a powerful question that people bring to the table, whether that's service that's rendered to immigrants, legal or illegal, or whether that's simply people who don't have insurance. And so I think there's a reasonable discussion about how to move with affordably accessible care to a medical care that is not focused on the emergency room. And to me, you know, we have to, you know, kind of remove that pressure from the emergency room. These hospitals are under siege, and even in Massachusetts, I want to point out again, that the sense that a global solution, just forcing everybody to have coverage, will solve that problem, and I think Terry's issues come up. In Massachusetts, they say that 75% of the people who didn't have insurance in Massachusetts have gotten it since Romney Care effectively there, but the costs, the uncompensated care at hospitals has fallen by only half that amount, by about 36%. So just waving a wand and saying everybody has coverage is not going to be an answer to this.
Well, Brian, in Rhode Island, not to take up much more time, but in Rhode Island, last year, we, the taxpayers, paid $138 million in uncompensated care to hospitals in Rhode Island, and the head of the Rhode Island Hospital Association refuses to divulge where that money went. So, I mean, it gets to be ridiculous. How much are we going to spend? You know, and like, as far as, with illegal aliens, they're only entitled to emergency medical care. Emergency medical care. So if you're in a car accident, you have a big traumatic injury, come on, we'll take care of you. Of course we will. But if you have a hangnail or you have a bad cold, you're not supposed to be in that emergency room, and they're in there every day, and we're taking care of them. And I can...
I wanted to comment on something you asked about and something you just said. Again, trying to clear up some things factually. Actually, something you said wasn't quite accurate. It wasn't your tax dollars that paid for all that uninsured care at the hospitals. It was actually all of us that have insurance. All right? The way it works, the way it works, folks, is that every time free care is given, that goes back into the room rates that are charged to the insurance companies that they in turn charge us in our premiums. So we're all paying for that now. Now, the only other point I'd like to make is, you know, I don't want to get into the debate about who we treat and who we don't, but once we agree to treat people in a hospital, we already are paying it. So we got to figure out a way not to pay as much. And the problem is, a lot of these folks, whoever they are, wait till it's so serious they have cancer and they have heart attacks, and we need to find a way to treat people earlier so that it's cheaper. See, the rest of us have insurance. We go to the doctor, we get our pills for our high blood pressure, our cholesterol, and it prevents a lot of those heart attacks. It prevents a lot of the disease. These folks wait until the end of the process, and then a typical heart attack today can run $75,000 to $150,000. An office visit in Rhode Island costs, not counting the lab work, about $75.
Okay. Thank you. Keep in mind, this is your form. Yes, ma'am. Come on up here. Would you like to, you can, either way, you can do it over here or you up here. Come on up. Thank you.
My name's Donna Cook. I'm from North Tiverton. As far as the different languages, we have the internet. All you have to do is press a button, and from far away, you can get whatever language you need. I mean, you can do that. So that would solve that problem. I like the fact you're using the word illegal alien, because all I ever see is illegal immigrant, which is a... immigrant, which is a, which is a wrong use of words, they're not immigrants, they're here illegally, and they're aliens. And when they, when they, when they're here and use any of the services illegally, they're stealing from me, they're stealing from my back pocket and my paycheck, they're stealing from all of us, and it's a burden, and I want them gone.
Thank you. Future Congressman Loughlin, I appreciate you having us here in this forum. I thank your esteemed guests that are here to, to represent us, since our representative, Patrick Kennedy, will not meet with us. He's pulling the, the death card. Anyway, I'm part of the problem we have today with Barack Obama and the fact that I'm unemployed. I don't have health insurance, that's by my choice. I have the option of electing Cobra, but who can afford to pay $843 a month for health insurance? So I just go without it. I went to the doctors last week, I paid my bill, I walked out, I got my care, it hurt a little bit, so be it, it's done. Why do I have to now fund healthcare for everybody in the world, it seems, everybody doesn't belong here? And, and why just sign these bills into law without reading it, without letting the people read it? I would like the opportunity to read it, even if I don't have three lawyers to help me interpret it. Are you willing to, to allow us to see the legislation?
I think you touched on a, you touched on a really important point, and, and I was particularly struck by an amendment that was in the Senate, in the Senate, I believe the Senate Finance, where there was an amendment that was proposed to make sure that the bill sat for 72 hours so that they could read the bill, and they rejected that amendment? And what, what struck me about that was not so much that they had rejected the amendment, I kind of expected that, but 72 hours to digest one of the most complex pieces of legislation perhaps of the 21st century? How about 72 days?
Exactly.
How about time for people? You know, legislation this big and this important needs to be digested not only by the congressmen and senators, and it is their duty to know and understand that legislation, but it needs to be dissected and digested by the general public and the folks, so that those problems can be surfaced before it becomes law and before we run into what I like to call the law of unintended consequences. So I would have liked to have seen a 72-hour amendment made into a 72-day amendment.
Yeah. I'd like to go one step further. And let's have the bills originate from the House and not from some other third-party place like Apollo and all these other people that are writing our bills, and then Congress is forcing it down our throat.
Right, agreed?
Thank you, thank you. Who else has questions? Now we're getting somewhere. Just come right up, just queue right up there, and we'll, we'll get you, we'll get, we got as much time as you've got questions.
Kathy Santos, East Providence. I have a 26-year-old daughter who works for a small business, she does not have health insurance, and, you know, she'd like to be able to get it, except that it's unaffordable. She says, "If I could afford health insurance in the first place, I wouldn't be living with you and Dad." You know, that's one. And I know about, when you were talking about the Cobra, because I know, five years ago, when my husband was out of work, we were putting Cobra payments for healthcare on, you know, our Visa, while trying to pay everything else to keep us going, because my husband, you know, pre-existing condition, heart problem, so it's like, we, you know, don't need to go there. And, you know, these are, you know, I think that if, and I think the insurance man here would have, you know, be able to give us some better insight, but I would like to see nationally, you know, all the insurance companies being able to, you know, give you the best price, because that's what's gonna drive it down. If you only have, you know, two choices, you know, I mean, the ceiling's gonna be way up there on both of them, even though that's, you know, now you're actually...
I think it's universally agreed that monopolies are bad for consumers.
Oh, yeah, yeah. And as far as like the whole thing, all right, to go on to the other thing too, I don't want, I want everybody to be able to, you know, have the insurance that they want. I have, you know, another daughter, her and her husband, they're trying to have a child, and they're, you know, going to fertility clinic, but, you know, if they, you know, don't want to be told what they can or cannot have as far as, you know, features in their insurance. You know, so that's another, you know, thing that concerns them. And, you know, the other thing too is, you know, my son-in-law is a legal resident, and he did everything legally, you know, to come here and such, and, you know, it is a burden, you know, if you don't do it, you know, correctly. And I would like to see, you know, somebody, you know, locally in our legislature, in our, you know, Washington contingent, to have enough guts to say, you know, "We have a law for reason, you know, do it right or get out." And I think that that's gonna, you know, save us some money, because while my 26-year-old daughter can't afford, you know, insurance, and if she, when she has to go, she has to go for a medical, you know, thing, she's gonna have to get, do, work out a payment plan to make that happen. And, you know, somebody else, you know, comes from another country and, you know, illegally, and all of a sudden, you know, they get for the bubble, and that's just not right. And, you know, there's just so many issues, I don't think that having the government be in charge of anything is a good idea for anything, let alone your health insurance.
Well, Kathy, if I can, if I can kind of quickly encapsulate your question, and, and maybe even reframe it a little bit, and if you disagree with the way I'm reframing it, please tell me. What can we do to drive down the cost of insurance? The insurance costs are killing us. Joel, what can we do to drive those costs down?
I'd like to, if I may though, first kind of respond to something that you, you said. In the state of Rhode Island, the structure of health insurance is that you can really only buy group health insurance through an employer. And that, by the way, cannot be sold with pre-existing conditions. But let's suppose you can't afford Cobra, or you're done with Cobra, or you're new in the area and you don't have a job yet. In this state, with one little exception, you cannot buy health insurance without pre-existing conditions for individuals. That's something that really, really has to change. And the one exception is Blue Cross is a insurer of last resort. Once a year, they let you in the door, but they charge you an arm and a leg. So we need to get rid of pre-existing conditions for individual policies. Other parts of the country, that's, pre-existing conditions are even sold with group employer policies, and that's really a terrible thing. To answer your question about cutting costs, you know, and I'm not defending health insurance companies, I don't work for them anymore, but, but they, they make about 4% or 5% profit on the insurance premiums we make, which, by the way, when it's a huge number, then it's a huge, a lot of dollars. But the majority of the cost are the claims. You talked about, for instance, fertility treatment, $18,000 of treatment. So how do we get rid of that? Well, I'd ask you to look around the room. Where are the problems? We need to get healthier, we need, I can identify an American when I walk through Europe anytime, so usually the fat ones. And we need to work on that and have, have incentives for people to get healthier. Right now, it's like when I used to give my daughter the credit card, you know, she, no, no limits, she just kept using it. So what we need to do is get people to be more responsible, we need to design things to make people more responsible, so that we can control our health and be healthier and cost less. It's really, really expensive to treat very, very sick people. Now, it's really the only way I know.
Like a soda tax?
You know what, the soda companies are, you're, I have to agree with that, but the soda companies are pretty upset about that.
I think, I think that, but, I, I think...
Come on, come on, right up, come on up to the mic.
I think, I think Joel's point, though, is something that you could consider in terms of health insurance, but that for, you know, reasons of politics is not on the table. I mean, in fact, what, all of these bills consider community rating. There's some allowance for, for age, but, but basically, there's no allowance. Look, the obvious incentive is, you know, if you're overweight, maybe your health insurance should cost more. Or at least there shouldn't be a law preventing a company from offering a lower rate to people who are, you know, who recognize those incentives. In other words, why do we need, why do we need to tax soda if we're arguing about healthcare? The answer is, why can't you get a discount if you're in good shape?
That's right. Yeah, I think the last thing we need, the last thing we need is another ridiculous tax. And it's, it's social engineering through tax policy. Now, my understanding of tax policy is it was originally designed to raise money to pay for things like the Army and the Navy, and, and to pay those police forces and the, the folks that we need to keep us safe. But it's evolved into a method to try and mold your behavior, to try and make Washington do what you want them to do. And the way they do it is through tax policy, that's wrong, and it needs to stop.
And I agree with the incentives, and I have real concerns about those kinds of taxes taking away people's individual liberties and making, controlling your life.
Agreed.
You know, if I could, if I could address your question on saving, saving costs too, you know, and the CBO has reported that only 3% of the insurance premiums are profit, which is rather standard for most industries. That's not the problem, it's, we have a broken system, the system doesn't operate correctly. Clearly, in the, you know, in the past, it's always been structured that insurance is provided predominantly through your employer. And then, of course, we have the complaints that the employer isn't under, in control, and the HMO scares and all that. We really need to get back to a system where the consumer is in charge of the money, and that's when real fiscal responsibility comes into play. You know, when I was a kid, it was common to say, if you got a, a report from the doctor, that you'd get a second opinion. When's the last time you heard somebody talk about getting a second opinion from a doctor? It's just not part of the system anymore, because we're told where to go and who to see. So that would be the first step, I would say, is to put the power of consumption in the consumer's hands as it should be. And that can be done by allowing those tax credits to the individual and not just to, to the employer.
The other thing too, Bill, we need to do is we need to drive down the costs that our medical professionals are facing in the cost of both defensive medicine, which is basically ordering a whole bunch of additional tests that you don't need, that they do to be able to cover themselves from an insurance perspective, and then it's the cost of the malpractice insurance.
Correct.
The cost of malpractice insurance is out the group.
No.
And one of the reasons that's so expensive is because we need meaningful tort reform. We don't need a test in one state, we know tort reform is what we need, we need to implement tort reform as any discussion of healthcare reform.
You know, clearly, no, no arguments there. And to Kathy's point, you know, seven years ago, legislation was written in Rhode Island that would have allowed us to, to purchase insurance across state lines, and it hasn't gone anywhere. But it's there, and the governors' associations are working to push those initiatives through as well. Everybody understands there's 1,300-some-odd insurance companies around the country, yet we can choose from just a few. So that is clearly also a cost savings measure. Thirdly, transparency. Do you know how much it costs to get your knee fixed, or to get a shot, or to get a pill? A transparency in pricing is critical, we, we do it with every other industry except for medical. And lastly, a, a form of health information exchange technology is necessary. Now, I'm, I'm more in the line of, of letting that be privatized, I'm not comfortable with the government having a database of health records, but the point being is that it could even be controlled on an individual basis, but so, so many duplicative services are done simply because of a lack of information, and so that's a fourth step that I would push forward.
Yes, sir. My name is Richard Kane from Portsmouth. I'm presently on Medicare, I'm spending over $400 a month for, my wife and I, for the supplemental to get the coverage we need. Now, much has come out of Washington confusing, what is gonna happen to Medicare, to us people that own Medicare? What's gonna happen to our premiums, which are very expensive now if you want any coverage at all? And it's so confusing now, you don't know what's really going on.
I want to remind everybody, this, we've said it a few times, about four or five different bills, they all keep changing, so who knows for sure? But at this juncture, as I understand it, the design of Medicare will not change at all. But, but what will change is the reimbursement levels to the doctors and hospitals. Now, at first glance, we might say, "Well, that's good, they're gonna cut the payments to the doctors and hospitals." But the problem might be that that's gonna cause a lot of doctors and hospitals to either go bankrupt or refuse to take your Medicare, and that's gonna reduce your care. So, so the concern there is, is it's easy to say, "Well, good, we'll cut the cost of this," and that'd be a good thing. But the bad news would be then that less doctors and hospitals would able to, be able to perform the services you want. So there's nothing I know of in design that they're saying, "Oh, seniors can't have their Medicare, or they're gonna change it." But the doctors and hospitals may refuse it if they don't get paid enough to make a living.
I, if, if I could follow up just with some numbers, it's already so that, that the, the government is, is a very large buyer of health insurance, and deals, I don't know if harshly is the right word, but let's say that they deal very sternly with the hospital, such that Medicare and Medicaid, they, they compensate at different levels, Medicare's anywhere from 20% to 30% below what your commercial carrier would be required to pay, or is billed for a procedure at a hospital, Medicaid is even lower. So there's a significant amount of cost shifting, much like the uncompensated care, there's already, this amounts to about 15% of, of your premiums, whether you pay them or your employer does, 15% of the premium that you pay is, if, if these, if payments were leveled, if Medicare and Medicaid paid the same as, as commercial, and the hospitals were to come out, again, the hospitals are, you know, relative, almost controlled like, like utilities, they don't have a big margin. So if you assume the hospital needs approximately what it's bringing in the door, then, and you leveled those payments, the, the cost of commercial insurance would go down. The Baucus bill has proposed partly to pay for, you know, increasing, you know, passing coverage to people who don't have it by, by stagnant Medicare reimbursement. So they're already reimbursing 20% to 30% below the commercial side, they basically have proposed to save $200 billion by not allowing those rates to, to increase at all. And, and so the phenomenon, whether there will be, or whether the, I mean, the other possibility is that there'll be more cost shifting, you know, this is not going to make the price of insurance for most people go, go down. So this, this Medicare effect is, it really is a great deal of concern.
And, and I think we have to be very, very careful with, with Medicare and what we do in terms of Medicare, because so many of our seniors depend upon that. We've already seen that there's gonna be no cost of living adjustment for Social Security, that's gonna put further pressure on income, and if, if it's private insurance that ends up making up the gap as Medicare reimbursements are cut down, that's gonna put even greater pressure on folks that are already on a fixed income.
You know, the, clearly, when you look at the increase of costs, healthcare costs at the different sectors, it, it makes Phil's, Joel's point about shift, cost shifting. Medicare, Medicaid went up around 6%, private care, purchasing myself is around 9%, and then employment-based care is going up about 12% a year. So clearly, the cost shifting is already happening. But the big picture on Medicare, Medicaid, and Social Security, that, you know, you get these folders in the mail from Social Security telling you what you will receive at retirement, if you look at it, and they don't even put it in the fine print, it's right there on the front page, that the numbers that are inside that folder, you're only gonna get 78% of that. It, it says it right on the front page, unless something happens, you're only gonna get 78% of that. So they already know that their, the funding for that program is down. 25% of long-term care is, is paid for out of private money. However, half of that is Social Security pass-through. So as we see the funding and the sustainability for Social Security dwindling, then clearly that will impact what long-term care providers have to pay. The, the price will be shifted somewhere else, because certainly the cost is not going to go down. Then there's Medicare. MedPAC, which is a lobbying firm, as it were, in Washington that goes to Congress every year and says Medicare is too profitable for the service providers, you need to control these costs, and they get shut down by Congress every year. Well, the Obama administration is planning to make them a government entity now called IMAC, and that will change the rules a little bit, that they won't have to ask for permission. They will put forth proposals, and then Congress will need to act within 30 days or the proposals will move forward. This gives more hand, control into the hands of government and will control those costs. So as we see Social Security dwindling, and we will see more constraints on Medicare, which is where the nursing homes get the larger share of their profit, clearly, the pinch is gonna go somewhere, which will leave us in only one solution, a Medicaid population that will either be constrained by the services provided or the population offered. And that's my roundabout way of getting... And that's my roundabout way getting back to the Medicaid issue we have in Rhode Island. Clearly, if we expand the population and we have a finite amount of money, the only way to make ends meet is to cut the services provided. And I don't think that's where our culture wants to go. I think our culture is one more to say, we want to provide the best care for those that cannot afford it themselves. But if you can't afford it, we expect as a culture you to take care of yourself. So those are the choices that we're going to have to make in the future.
Now, would you be more comfortable if I came around with the microphone rather than having to come up here in the center? We can do that. Or if you'd like to come up, all right, come on up. I know it's sometimes a little intimidating with this giant dance floor here, but...
Hi, my name is Pat Christensen. I live on Budway here in Tyrton. I just had a question of something I heard on the, on television this morning, that four states were going to be exempt from helping to pay for healthcare. It was going to be Oregon, Nevada, Rhode Island and Michigan. Do, but there were four states and I do, and does anybody, you haven't heard of this?
It was, it was Harry Reid.
Well, Nevada.
They're paying extra tax. They're paying 40% because in Harry Reid, Montana and Maryland, he talked to the Senate committee and the chairman and got a waiver so they don't have to pay the tax. They want all the other states to pay.
Right. But in Rhode Island is one of the states. It was Rhode Island?
Yeah, Rhode Island.
It was Rhode Island.
Well, I will certainly, I don't, I have not seen that. I, you know, I can't comment on something I haven't seen, but I certainly will look into that.
Okay.
But keep in mind too, that this is still in the proposal stage and that what finally comes out of either the Senate side or the House side has to go to conference committee to be reconciled. There's still a million changes yet to come. So stay tuned because the developments are going to be coming fast and furious, but I certainly will look into that.
Oh, absolutely. What do you think of private healthcare insurance savings? The healthcare is savings...
Health savings accounts?
Yes.
Health savings accounts.
Yes.
I'm fearful that they're not going to be in existence if Obama gets his way with, you know, one of the issues and Obama's often been quoted as saying that you won't lose your coverage that you currently have.
Joe Wilson here.
I, you know, we, well, if, you know, that, I think that first quote came out on, and I had a listing of it, I'm afraid I didn't bring it, but it was on June 13th and on the 15th, someone from the White House said that, that he shouldn't be taken literally at that statement. The reality is, is they're going to have standards and you will be able to keep what policy you have until it changes. And then you will have to meet the standards. And that change can mean that you have a child, so your policy's going to change, or maybe your child moves out of the house, several, or you change an employer or whatever. Those changes are the trigger points that you will have to meet the standards. And so that's why the fear is that everybody will eventually move into that. I think it was even the Lewin Group that put out the numbers. They believe 48% of people in private insurance will end up in that public plan at some point.
I'd like to comment real quick too. Yeah, I'll be quick. The reason that the, a government plan would ultimately put insurance companies out of business is because of their, the government's ability to mandate what they're going to pay those providers. So it sets a different standard, just like Medicare, where they'll say, we're only going to pay X. And an insurance company would have to pay way more, which would raise your premium even more. And then, of course, you'd be forced to kind of, for price, nobody's going to hold a gun to your head, but for price, you're going to have to switch.
Just to get back to, don't take them literally. One of the major, one of the major options. Close enough to the mic, okay? I usually don't have a problem with that. If you look at the number of insurance companies in this, in this, in this country, basically, and I think you quoted about 1,300 or something like that, my understanding is there's a significant number of those things that are already nonprofit, okay? And I don't understand since the major argument for, you know, a public option is that it's, it'll provide nonprofit competition, okay? Then, tell me if I'm right, tell me if I'm wrong. I mean, I know Blue Cross Blue Shield of Rhode Island is...
Blue Cross of Rhode Island is a nonprofit. Not all Blue Crosses are, but about half of them are. Tufts, that's in the state now is nonprofit. So you're right, there's a lot, a lot of nonprofits. Nonprofit, by the way, doesn't mean they can't make a profit, just means they don't have shareholders.
That's right. And that, but my, my point is, okay, that there are, there are nonprofits that exist and we don't need another one, okay, to go with all the others that are there.
And my concern too is that Blue Cross Blue Shield, with all due respect, is supposed to be a nonprofit. Look, my God, look at the building that they're putting up on the lawn of the State House. If that's a nonprofit organization, I'd hate to see what a for-profit organization looks like.
There's also those government buildings, by the way.
Yes, I couldn't agree with you more. But I mean, for something that's a nonprofit, I just think that, you know, when you look at, somebody mentioned salaries, you look at some of the other compensation that goes on within that organization, it, it does raise some questions.
Yeah, the one other thing that I wanted, wanted to mention that is the, the Wednesday night, the state, state of the healthcare, not state of the union, but state of the healthcare, where Joe Wilson made a quote inappropriate comment, even though, even though the content was probably true. But the, he also made a statement, the president also made a statement that he was going to call out people, okay, that, that basically passed misinformation or lied about the healthcare reform. The day before that, okay, the day before that, the president, in a speech to the AFL-CIO, okay, asked a rhetorical question in the course of his speech. And that rhetorical question was, okay, do my, do the, do my opposition, have my opposition have any solutions, okay, or have they have any alternate proposals out there?
There are several, and I brought some with me.
But his answer after a brief pause was, no, they have none.
That's simply not the case.
So if he wants to call out people, he needs to look in the mirror.
Thank you. Go ahead.
Rep, if I could make a quick, quick comment on, on your point, sir. You may have seen George Knie was on 10 News, the News...
Newsmakers.
Newsmakers, thank you. And the unions have been very forceful at promoting a public option. And he was asked on that show, does that mean the unions will, will allow their school districts in their towns to relieve them of the burden of healthcare and put all their employees in public option? And he said, well, that'll be decided under contract negotiations. So clearly, it's good enough for you, but not, not good enough for them.
Thank you, Representative, for having everyone here today for us. I'm Karen Gorman. I'm not here for illegal immigration. My question pertains to if you like your plan, you can keep it. If you are an employer and you have over $250,000 of gross payroll per year, correct me if I'm wrong, you would pay an 8% tax if you...
If you choose not to.
If you choose not to pay the Blue Cross for your employers. So my question is, how fast will our employers dump us off our plans and into this new plan? And my, and my second question was, why are the unions exempt from the 8% tax?
I will not defend the unions. Well, first of all, the, the, again, the CBO, the Lewin Group, they've both looked at this issue of how many people would move over. The difference between the two studies, the CBO only looked at employee, employers with 20 or less employees. The Lewin Group looked at all employers. And they, again, I think I mentioned it earlier, that they estimate that 48% of you in employee-based healthcare program will end up in the public option.
Great. Thank you.
But, and I, I think the thing, I think the thing that's, that's important to remember here, because again, that, that this whole, this, I call it an artifact, you might think that that's an odd term, but the artifact that you get healthcare insurance from your employer, I mean, that really arose, actually, you know, was a, was it a benefit, an inducement? When there were, when government had put in wage and price controls, this was something that, and it was, you know, during, I'm not big on, believe me, I'm not big on wage and price controls, but this was the environment in which it happened. So this was an inducement, you know, to, to try and get people to the table. Now, some people have come to look at this as essentially almost like a social duty of the employer. When it started, the whole point was they offered you healthcare because they wanted you there. You know, that was a benefit they gave. Now, you know, if the whole package of employment and the, and the, the economy, you know, doesn't, doesn't provide them, you know, the opportunity or the, the package to make that, I mean, I think we have to, we have to be realistic about that. And certainly, our own choice is when somebody says, you know, if you like your health insurance, you can keep it. Look, I'm, in a sense, I'm willing even to grant the, the early rhetorical point, right? That in other words, they're not advocating a single payer system where tomorrow, everybody is on, is on the government program. But the, the whole point is that for the most part, you don't get to make the decisions about where your insurance is or what insurance, it's made by your employer. And in a way, we've given something up. We've pushed a, a social duty to the employer of sorts and we've given up the choice. We've given up that ability to, to make the, you know, to make the market and be more involved in it. One thing, and, but, and I do think the alternatives that, that President Obama was looking for do lie in more consumer-centered healthcare, at least in options. When we look at, at options for affordability, you know, options to buy, especially for people who aren't covered in groups or through business, to buy, you know, catastrophic coverage. When we insist that everybody's got to get, you know, gold-plated coverage, that drives the, that drives the cost up. And in Rhode, look, we've got plenty of work to do as a state policy think tank in Rhode Island. Joel referred to the cost, for instance, of fertility treatments. Invidro fertilization is mandated in our state, you know, by, by state law. So that, you know, we have work to do right, we have work to do right here, right here in Rhode Island. And I would like, and look, they, they tried, I mentioned, they tried that, have tried an experiment very similar to Obamacare or to, to this program in Massachusetts. I don't think the results have been stellar, but, but, you know, they argued about it and they tried it. I really think that we can let the laboratories of democracy work.
Mailings and on television ads going with the new healthcare reform plan. And I was wondering if you have any answers as to why they're pushing that. I'd like to know because the AARP is supposed to be representing people like me. And I'm, I'm very curious as to why. I think I have suspicions, but if you have any answers, could you please tell us all?
That's an excellent, excellent question. In fact, you'll be pleased to know that I just, in March, got my AARP card in the mail. Apparently now they're sending them to those of us who are 25. Hey, I, I think, and, and this, I, I want to, I want to say this again with a little bit of lightness. I don't intend to make an enormous partisan jab here, but the, but I couldn't help, but, you know, if people are familiar with The Lost television show and, and everything there, you know, that was on this island took place as part of the DARPA initiative, you know, it's kind of, well, I actually think that, that AARP could easily grab that acronym. I think they qualify more as the Democratic Association of Retired People. And, you know, and, and this is, you know, I think that, I think that it's unfortunate, but I can only say, if, I mean, you'd never find me on their membership list, although they started sending, you know, I got to be 52 this year, so they, they started sending me some stuff. And, you know, I don't really plan to retire, but I think, you know, you always have to choose. There are also organizations that I think provide a significant alternative to AARP, where you can raise your voice if you are within the cohort of retired people.
No, not to interrupt, but what's the motivation? What's the motivation for the real active and vocal support of AARP and a plan that arguably is not in the best interest of their membership?
Yeah, I mean, well, look, I mean, I just, I have to view this, in many ways, it, it's the same kind of question you asked when you said, well, if the unions think a public option is such a great thing, are they willing to come table and say, look, our members will lead the way? All the teachers in Rhode Island are going right on the, but no, they're not going to, and you know what? They shouldn't because the job of the union, of course, is, is what it's, is what it should be, right? Is to get what they can for their members. They're bargaining for their members.
They don't advocate something for me.
Right. And I think that you, but you do see some sense that, look, you know, as long as we can kind of exempt our, you know, you know, at least perceive to, to exempt or carve out something or to advance our influence, you know, maybe we're going to go along with the program because this is, you know, this is the big initiative of this administration. And if you want, you know, if you want this administration to pay attention to your agenda, I think you're considered to be, you know, a pretty bad soldier if you, if you aren't marching to this. And I, and I'm not cynical about that at all. I mean, it's just, that's just plain politics. They're marching with the people who are in charge because that, you know, they have other things they'd like to get done. And I think they think they can limit the damage to their members or at least the damage to their reputation that they sold their members out. And, you know, I think you have, you have to take them to task. If you have issues with AARP, especially to the extent that they kind of claim to speak for virtually everybody who falls in that category, I hope that you're vocal if you disagree with them.
Just a point for everybody?
I think you can also look at the membership numbers.
Oh, I'm sorry, I was just going to make one little point. If you see the ads on TV for AARP and the supplemental health insurance plans for Medicare, they're all in partnership with United Healthcare. So beware of independents here. Yeah, I, I mean, I think we've all heard the news, the membership of the AARP has dropped significantly in the last few months, but I think this is just an example...
Hopefully that wasn't by natural causes too.
Yeah. You know, we see this with the, oh, I'm sorry. We see this with the insurance agent, the Big Pharma, that, that Democrats are still saying are the bad guys, although they've signed on already. This is simply to me, an example of the people paying the cannibals to eat them last. They're, they're getting what they can now and worry about their future, in the future.
Yes, sir.
I, they talked about, well, my name is Stephen Trendat, I'm from Tivon, Rhode Island.
Thank you, thank you for coming out.
The man on the end there, I forget his name, I'm sorry. But you said there wasn't going to be any loss of Medicare or Medicaid, but yet they're talking about the Medicare, I believe, Advantage program where there's 10 million seniors on there taking benefit of that program, and that's one program they want to cut. Coming in here on the radio, I heard that one of the reasons why they want to cut and why AARP wants to get this removed from the plan is because AARP offers the same program, but at a lot higher premiums. And the Obama administration has agreed to let AARP take care of it and cost the seniors a whole lot more money, but yet nobody seems to want to talk about this program. Another thing coming in tonight is that the Senate Committee just voted down again a bill for ID cards so that people collecting benefits from the government would have a permanent ID for the healthcare or even for voting, and they shot it down. It seems like they don't care about the citizens of the United States, but they'll bend over backwards for the illegals and give them anything, and yet they want us to pay for it.
Thank you very much for that. You know, obviously, we've got to have a means of figuring out who is in this country legally and who is not. And we have to seal our borders and it looks like we're doing less and less to do that. And my fear is as we make benefits and, and social structures more attractive, that we actually create, we make a worse problem because we induce more people to come across our borders illegally and to make the problem worse and worse and worse. And then my ultimate fear is that at some point, we're going to say, okay, let's just grant amnesty to everybody's here. Because if that happens, if that happens, what you've done is you might as well hang a sign that says, come on in, because everybody in the world is going to try and get to America because they know eventually we'll get to a point where we'll just say, oh, okay, you're all citizens. So I think we got to be very, very careful about that issue and the impact that it has on our healthcare and on all our expenses. Yes, sir.
My name is David Place. I drove down here from Burville. Obviously, I'm not one of the constituents now, but I'm hoping to, to change that come next November. Who here thinks anything coming out of Congress will work? Does anybody here think anything coming out of Congress will work? Okay? So you're going to send this to Congressman Kennedy, correct? You know, you can see this Congressman, no one here thinks anything that's coming out of Washington right now is going to work. I want to challenge you to get me, get me going, get everybody else in this room, come up with a plan. You know, you say you've got these plans over here and everybody else in this room. I think if everybody in this... I think if everybody in this room, if we sat down and start asking questions, it's not a complicated thing. It's not complicated. You don't need to be a lawyer, you shouldn't need to be a lawyer, to read the things coming out of Washington. They're simple things, you know? Cut back on drug medication. Stop making, stop letting foreign countries force us to subsidize their countries. Why can't you get drugs in Canada for dirt-cheap prices? Because the Canadian government tells our drug companies, "You can't sell it at a proper rate." So what do the drug companies do? They sell it to us at a higher rate, because they can't sell it to Canada, or Europe, or Africa, or anywhere else in the country. So what are we doing? We're subsidizing the rest of the world. Why, why is our healthcare so high? Why is our healthcare so high? Because we subsidize everybody else. Why is it that Europe was able to have all these socialist policies for so long? Because we paid for their defense. Okay? I want to challenge you, come up with a plan before November, when you announce that you're going to challenge Congressman Kennedy, have the Loughlin Bill put together. Okay? I don't know if I pronounced the name right. Have that name. I don't, I don't want to vote. I'm not, I don't want to vote for somebody who's just going to toe the party line. Okay? We've got plenty of those people in Washington, we've got plenty of people. Michael Steele is a joke. Okay? The Republican Party, the Republican nationally, in the state, it's a big joke. Everybody here knows it. No one wants to be attached to a Republican name. Okay? It's, it's just the, the way it is. And I want to challenge you, I want to be able to vote for somebody in this state that, I'm not voting because they're a Republican, I'm not voting because they're a Democrat, I'm not voting for them because they're a moderate. I'm voting because I believe in the person that I'm sending to Washington, because I believe, I believe that person represents what I believe in. And I want to challenge you to make me that person, so when, come November of next year, when I go into a ballot box and I mark your name, I'm not marking your name because I hate Patrick Kennedy, and I think Patrick Kennedy is a joke, I'm marking your name because I trust you. That's what I'm here for. I challenge you, come November, to have that for us. Thank you.
I want to say thank you very much for your, I want to say thank you very much for your comments. It's a challenge I readily accept, and Rhode Islanders are smarter than that. Rhode Islanders know how to look at an individual and look beyond party labels and vote for the person rather than the party label. So I take your challenge, and I encourage you to stay on top of me for it. Thank you.
Rep, could I, before the next speaker, before the next question came up, I just wanted to comment on his point and the previous question on Medicare and fraud, et cetera. There's a great book just came out called Stop Paying the Crooks by Jim Froeg and Newt Gingrich, and it talks about Medicare, Medicaid fraud. The gentleman's point that government doesn't do anything very well, and this is a perfect example, the estimates of fraud in Medicare and Medicaid are the 10% to 15% range, which I think are very conservative. In the credit card industry, it's, it's less than 1%. To give you an example of what the private industry can do compared to the, the public sector. The studies that came out using those conservative opinions put the waste, just in New York City, or a state, at about $20 billion a year. Consider what that is across the country. A perfect example of how faulty that system is, is in Florida right now. Well, I almost said a gentleman, but he's not. He was in, in jail for murder, was in jail for 15 years, came out, started a company selling durable medical equipment, and, and, and now is going back to jail again for Medicaid fraud. So, this is the kind of scrutiny that we have in that system, and clearly, you know, we'll be strong advocates for privatizing as much as we can, because we sincerely believe that when there's a profit motive involved, that's when you get accountability and, and these sort of things just don't happen.
Yeah. My name's Willie Wolfley, I come from Bristol. I'd like to second what the gentleman just said. When I heard that you have this meeting, I went on your website and I wanted to see, who is this man? And I was really disappointed at the, right on the outset, because I see that you sent a letter to Washington to read to our representatives for federal funds to get Rhode Island out of the mess with the pension system. I said, my initial thought was, do I need someone to represent me that wants to spend more money, whether or not it comes out of my right pocket or my left pocket? It doesn't really make a difference. I'm still paying. So, my opinion is the three gentlemen that are in Washington right now, they don't represent me. I want someone that represents me, and I haven't written you off, but I want to really hear what you have to say. I came in this country for 23 years, I was in Germany, and I was the recipient of the social system. I had no worries, no cares, but I didn't know anything else. I came over here for 30 years, I was employed, everything was taken care of, but then, we weren't really sick either. Then I was self-employed for 13 years, no insurance. Now I'm on Medicare. I went through the gamut. I had it all. What happened the other day, after two years on Medicare, I go and I get medication, I go to the drugstore and, not being accustomed to how the system works, I forget to give them my insurance card. $45 for the prescription. Oh, I have a card and I give it to them, I look at my receipt afterwards, and what does it say? $10 copayment, $7.16 for the insurance. If I have no insurance, I pay $45. If I have insurance or Medicare, it's $17.16. We have to fix the system. Our system is broke. We don't need healthcare reform. We need a consumer protection law. We can do this with a hundred, under 100 pages, not with 1,500 pages by the time the Senate is done, the House is done, and we have reconciliation, it's going to go on and on and on and on. We have, right now, our national debt, or I call it our national credit card, and my share as an individual is $38,000 at this time. A family of five is $200,000 that we owe right now. That is more than the average mortgage in Rhode Island. Are we nuts? If you want to represent us, you have to come up with ideas that make sense, that puts Washington on a spending plan, or else we might as well burn the place and move to Cuba. Some of our representatives think it's a great place.
Well, thank you very much. Thanks for coming out here tonight. You know, spending is, spending is the key issue that, that we absolutely need to address. And, and while I didn't want to really delve into the pension thing tonight, we're talking about healthcare, I will just quickly say that the pension system that we have in place right now for public sector employees is unsustainable. It's unsustainable and it needs to end. Now, there are any number of ways of ending that system, and one of the ways in which we can end that system is the same thing that the federal government did in 1985, when they moved into the Thrift Savings Plan. And that's, end it immediately. Cut it right off, offer the non-vested people the option, and just grandfather everybody else out. And there are any number of ways of doing that, some of which involve spending money, some of which involve plan design changes, but the point is, the most important point is that we need to end the pension system as we know it, because it is unsustainable going forward.
John, if, if, I just wanted to quickly suggest the gentleman who, I mean, I think that is an obvious disconnect, and the, an important point there, that goes to the kind of transparency that Bill was talking about. At least you saw, at least you read the bill, you, you know, you were interested, you saw that, you noticed the difference, and you wondered why the discrepancy. And what you're seeing there is what I described before. That's really just a form of what we see across the border in Canada. I mean, in that sector that the government pays, in America, we have price controls. They, I mean, they're already here for, for that sector. So the government, when the government says, "We're only paying $17 for this $45 bottle of pills," that means part of the reason that it's $45 is because the government only pays 17. And, and, you know, we can argue about, you know, whether or not, you know, they, you know, some drug company executive should have a Lamborghini or whatever, but I mean, that, 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 the innovation in drugs and medicine that goes on in America goes on because, and we pay a price for it, we, we watch the, the double-digit increases, but a lot of that is done here. And when you have other countries or portions of the market here that, that, you know, economically speaking, are going to free ride on that, you know, the rest of us are going to pay more. So we either can dispense with the innovation, not have, you know, new pills, not have the latest open MRIs, not have those kind of things, and, you know, take a less go-go approach to medicine, or, or we can look at at least how to try and fairly spread those burdens. And currently, the reason that you saw that reduction in your bill is because, because we have price controls in America.
Hi. First, I'd like to say thank you. Secondly, my name's Tricia Rovishad, I'm from Little Compton.
Rovishad?
Thank you. As far as healthcare reform, the four probably biggest things that I keep, that I keep hearing that I'm not interested in are proposals that create bigger government, move us in any way toward a single payer system, are taxpayer dollars going to pay for illegal alien care, and also my taxpayer dollar is going to pay for abortion. Are there any proposals? You mentioned there are six approximately being...
There are actually more than that.
More than that bandied around in DC and my...
There are more than that. There are several competing bills. I've got a matrix that includes some of them.
So, my question is, are there any out there, based on those just four major criterias for me, that I could support at this point?
Well, your, your, your point on the abortion issue, and I, and I just grabbed my little handy-dandy electronic brain, as my wife calls it, because there was action today that, that doesn't help us. Orrin Hatch proposed a bill, it was actually early today, that would have restricted abortions, saying that any plan that had an abortion rider in it could only be paid for out of your pocket, it could not be paid for with tax dollars. And that was shot down. And this gets back to the joke, and maybe we should have started the panel to, to say that if you don't agree with anything we said, just yell out, "You lied," and that'll get the point across. Because Joe Wilson was correct, in that while there was a line in there that says you won't give the benefits to illegal aliens, there was no teeth in that. And so, as we know, you can say anything you want, unless you put a penalty to it, it's still going to happen. So, what is being proposed right now? No, there's nothing to, to deal with your issues.
Yes, sir.
Good afternoon, gentlemen, and God bless America.
Thank you.
I have a two-part question. And the first part is, if healthcare is such a crisis, and it needs to get done two weeks in August, why is it most of the programs won't be implemented until after 2013?
That's an excellent question. Yeah, the cynical answer would be because of the election. I don't know why we can't take time to study these proposals, if they're not even going to kick in until after the, the 2010 election. You're absolutely right. Second part of your question.
Second part of my question. Because I think healthcare is going to be the easy part for you, if you're elected. As a parent of four boys that are serving in the Marine Corps, what are you doing, what are you willing to do to support them that's not being done for them right now? Those guys in Afghanistan are being left hanging out in the wind, and it's absolutely disgrace.
First of all, first of all, I'm going to mention a small thing to do with defense, and then a much larger thing. Again, we were going to try and focus on healthcare, but I think this is important, and I want to definitely answer your question. We're in Afghanistan. We're there. We have to win that. We're not in a position where we can withdraw those forces out of Afghanistan, and anything good will come of it. If we unilaterally withdraw from Afghanistan, what happens is that the Taliban celebrates a victory of having defeated the Soviet Army and the US Army, and we now have the world's greatest staging area for terrorism. We have no options now at this point, other than to do what's right, put the forces in there needed that, that we need to be able to win that conflict. To leave, there's no such thing as a halfway solution. As far as Afghanistan, you can argue whether or not we should be there to begin with, we're there, and you can't be a little bit pregnant. We saw what happened when the surge kicked in, which was opposed, by the way. The surge was opposed by virtually everyone who's in a power right now. We saw what happened when we let the generals have the forces they needed to be able to make the tactical decisions on the ground to turn that conflict. And we've seen great change in Iraq because of it. And what we need to do is we need to decide that we're going to win this conflict, we need to commit the forces that are necessary to do it, get the job done, and then get the hell out.
Thank you. My name is Jim Galoppo from Middletown, Rhode Island, and I'm happy to see you run against Patrick Kennedy.
Say that to the camera, because...
Patrick Kennedy, we want you out. You're not responsive to, I think, mainstream of Rhode Island, and we're going to, we're going to vote for this man.
Thank you.
I, I don't deny that the cost of healthcare is high, and it's very difficult for a lot of people, especially senior citizens, but I believe we have the best healthcare system in the world. And I, I think, I think statistics show it. I don't buy the premise it needs to be fixed, aside from the cost factor. And a lot of talk has been, a lot of valid points have been brought out, we need to, President Obama said he's going to ring some, if this bill is passed, I don't know, $200, $300 billion from Medicare fraud, why are we waiting for the bill to be passed? Let's get it done. And, so, I don't believe it needs to be fixed, and especially not by the government. I mean, what have they, what have they done? They can't run Medicare properly, they can't run Social Security properly, so we need it fixed.
So they can't run the post office properly.
You're right. So, government healthcare, run healthcare doesn't work anywhere in the world, there's no valid evidence of that anywhere. And I just want to talk about very briefly this idea of a compromise bill and putting a bill together here. Since I don't believe it needs to be fixed, I don't think there needs to be a bill. And I'm going to talk about that, because a couple of years ago, I saw a video of the President, a couple of years ago, and he was talking about how his goal was government-only run healthcare, and that it might take 10 to 15 years to get there. So, this bill, these bills that the Democrats in Congress are putting forth are, I don't believe he thinks he's going to get the, what is it?
The public option.
Yeah, the public option. I don't think he believes he's going to get it. And I think they're going to try, and I think the Republicans in Congress now are getting sucked in, and they're going to compromise somehow, and they're going to get what they want. If you look at history, the progressives have been trying to get government-run healthcare here for almost 100 years. It's been done all around the, the world by other progressives, socialists, communists. And, so I don't want to see any bill, because a compromise is a move in that direction. And I think tort reform, why don't the elected officials do what they're paid to, to do? Fix the government, and get the government to get off our back. Fix, go after tort reform right away, deport illegal aliens, and, and wring the costs out of Medicare, and drive the cost down. That's what needs to be fixed. We don't need bill upon bill and added cost and more government spending. I was in Washington at the beginning of this month, at that march, and I was just awestruck by all those buildings there filled with technocrats that we're paying for, and it's not that, they're not new. Their fathers and their fathers' fathers were there too, spending our money, and I'm sick of it. Thank you.
Thank you. John?
About 90% of what you had to say, I agree with, but, but I, I can't agree with one thing. You're not going to like what I have to say, but I, I have said I'd tell you the facts. You're absolutely wrong about having the best healthcare system in the world. We're, no, this is factual now, it's not opinion. We have, we have one of the worst infant mortality rates in the, in the Western world. Oh, yeah, we do. No, I'm not talking about, all I'm saying is, just, please, I'm just trying to give you the facts, this is an opinion. All right, you're not interested in facts. Almost every Western country in the, in the world, France, England, they do have a different system. I'm not saying we should switch to that, but if you look at the statistics, ask these gentlemen, we have some of the lowest, worst infant mortality rates, some of the worst cure rates of any system. We have a lot of waste, we have a lot of poor things, and I agree, tort reform is a big problem, is adding to a lot of costs. I don't disagree with most of what you have to say, but one thing I do is, is our care is not good. It's highly technical, we can save your life... We can save your life. The reason is, we have great technical things for the real, real sick. We have great technical cures for very, very sick people. But for the general population, the rates of cures are worse than other countries. It's just a fact.
And I think in many cases, it's access. You can get access in the United States a lot faster than you can in some of these countries that have a tremendous amount of waiting periods. But, you know, I mean, I think that we need to improve. We can always do better. We need to improve. We don't need to completely wipe out our system and start over. Peter?
Thanks, Representative Loughlin. I just wanted to clarify something about these selling across state lines. When Joel previously said that Blue Cross was the only one that sells individual insurance, my understanding is that that's in part because we have already made it illegal in the state of Rhode Island to deny pre-existing conditions, to sell to individuals, not sell because of pre-existing conditions. We've also made it illegal to drop people from their coverage. So, as a result, no private insurance companies want to follow those rules in the state, and Blue Cross is the only one that does it. That leads to my concern about the selling across state lines, which is, if anyone notices when they get a credit card solicitation in the mail, although we don't get as many of those anymore, those all come from Delaware and South Dakota. That's because credit cards are sold across state lines, which means that all the major credit card companies locate in the states that let them do whatever they want. 32% interest is acceptable in Delaware and South Dakota, so all the credit cards are sold out of those states. So, what would stop every, all of those 1,300 insurance companies to go to the Delawares and South Dakotas that don't offer any consumer protections? And yes, we'll get across state lines, we may get something cheaper, but we're gonna get a much poorer product that doesn't actually protect the consumer. And, you know, the things that we've already gained in Rhode Island, is not allowing insurance companies to drop us, we're gonna lose some of those protections that we now have.
Well, I mean, that assumes, Peter, that assumes a very static world. And we don't live in a static world. If we were in a situation where we opened up competition across state lines, then obviously the insurance companies that do a very poor job are not gonna be able to compete with insurance companies that do a much better job. That's competition. And as you open up the market for competition, competition leads to innovation. Innovation leads to lower prices overall. So, I would say that we don't live in a static world. We don't live in a world in which we have to accept South Dakota's insurance mandates. We live in a world in which we can innovate and compete.
And just from a technical standpoint, one thing you have to remember is, selling across state lines doesn't mean they would be obviated from following Rhode Island laws. It means that that has to do more with whether the company is specifically licensed in Rhode Island, has more to do with the structure of the company, maybe the amount of reserves they keep, things that are macro issues. Whereas, the issues, and again, I think some of the, I don't think we have the balance of mandates correct in Rhode Island, I mentioned previous, we have the largest number of mandates for health insurance at any state in the nation. So, you know, and that's specific, you know, whether it's for certain kidney treatments or certain, in other words, we've been, our legislature's been very specific, very many mandates. But selling across state lines doesn't mean that they wouldn't have to follow the kind of care mandates. Rather, it means it's the structure of the company, that the size of their reserves and things of that that would be affected.
And, yeah, I'm sorry, I'm not gonna comment on yours. I would just make the same point that John did, that I think it's a consumer's choice. And if the people aren't providing a product the consumer wants, that they won't take it, and then the market would adapt. I just wanted to go back to the previous question, because I know we're trying to get a lot of questions in and move fast, but I think it's important, he made an important point, when he said he didn't want a new bill out of Washington. This country has a great system of federalism. And as Brian had mentioned, the states are the laboratories of democracy. So, I am very much in agreeance with that, that we don't need a federal law. It would be much better to let each individual state experiment and find out what works, and move forward with that. Secondly, it also speaks to a particular culture that we have. You know, we've seen the shift of culture, really starting with Social Security, where our culture has gotten away from savings and taking care of ourselves. And now, this shift of having government take care of our healthcare is going to further that dependence on government. And we will find at a day in the future, if we continue on this path, that we won't think of healthcare as our own choice anymore, and that it will just be something given to us, like our retirement benefit in the future. So, I think it's a very dangerous road that we're going down.
Good question for you, related. If you combine, right, buying across state lines with also, right, getting rid of the employer-based system, and go more to individuals, that you've already talked about before, what you've got for insurance companies then is a market of what? 250, 300 million people, okay? Also, if you put those two things together, right, there are no pre-existing conditions if those insurance companies treat their people right. So, they're gonna get premiums for 25 to 35 years, okay? As long as they treat their people right. That alone, I think, will start driving down premium costs. And you can comment on that if I'm wrong.
Yeah, I agree with everything you say. Our system, as was mentioned before, is an employer-based system. It happened after World War II. And if we had an individual system where you could buy your coverage, one of those 1,300 companies, and shop it, as an individual, that would drive down the price, give us what we want. And that's simply not available now. We all suffer because of it.
Hi there. My name is Kendra. I'm from Tiverton. I'm a registered nurse here in Rhode Island. I work in cardiac med-surg.
Thank you for all the work you do.
Thank you. And thank you for recognizing that. And I'd like to thank the gentleman from Middletown, who mentioned that we do have the best quality healthcare in the world. I don't believe the gentleman here on the end actually answered the question of what other country has better healthcare than we do. Well, you would mention that there are other countries with better healthcare.
Oh, absolutely. The outcomes are better. I just said, England has better outcomes, France has way better outcomes, Germany, the gentleman that comes from Germany originally, way better.
Not in cases of cancer, oncology.
Way better outcomes. You have to read the statistics.
That's not the statistics that I've been hearing.
I don't wanna get emotional. Just read the statistics.
I have been.
The statistics speak for itself.
I have been.
I'm not advocating anybody here, don't think I'm advocating government assistance. I'm just saying that the outcome, we are an inefficient system. I'm part of it. I see it.
Well, yes, the system is broken.
And we need to fix it.
There are many fixes that need to be done, absolutely no doubt. But we don't ever really hear the positives that often. And whether or not you are an illegal immigrant or not, which I have taken care of many, you get excellent healthcare in this state. You are never turned away. You get the same healthcare, same high quality that you do whether you're illegal or not, whether you have health insurance or not. And I can say that every patient that I see throughout the day, I have a demographic sheet where I see their name, age, address, healthcare, and very few on there are ever uninsured. So, I would just like to mention that, and as well as the interpreter issue that we'd been talking about in this healthcare bill. In our hospital, everybody has access to an interpreter. Within a few minutes, we can have a phone that we can plug right in and have a conversation with an interpreter and the patient, answer any questions. There is no lack of interpreters. That's not a problem that I can ever say. And definitely issues of transparency and accountability and tort reform. Absolutely.
And I just wanted to quickly go to this quality of care issue, because I think that some of the statistics that Joel quotes, I think are correct, and I don't think he's being disingenuous, but the question is, again, on what metric? We have great technical cures. Some of our outcomes may indeed be based on trying to control for the very factors he recognized earlier. In other words, perhaps we're not behaviorally as healthy, so we have poorer outcomes with, you know, with the kind of ordinary circuit. In other words, there are a lot of things that could contribute to this. But I think the tenor of the comments, you know, somewhat in support of our healthcare ability here, also, they represent a basic satisfaction with the system. Would we wish that it didn't inflate faster than the cost of other things? Yes. But are we willing to go without the high-tech fixes? You know, and we've kinda decided, I personally, I think, that we, as difficult as the system is, as expensive as it is, you know, that we have come to prefer it. And that's not to take away, if you can go to Canada, and let's forget the war, the anecdotes, and, you know, granny's been waiting for hip for a while, I mean, I think you can also go to Canada and find a great many people who are, you know, who are happy. That's the context in which they live, they're happy with that system. And that probably could be true in Britain and France. But I think that in general, we're happy with the system for delivery. We find some possibilities with ourselves, and the more it could be consumer-driven, I think the better. I think we would be happier. And unfortunately, these reforms seem to be moving away from allowing us that input into the system. And personally, this is personally, and I don't wanna speak, I'm much less worried about having higher deductibles and co-pay if I can have better interaction with the system, and a more straight-up interaction with doctors. I'd much rather, you know, deal with paying some of those bills, as long as I'm in control, and I know that, you know, the catastrophic stuff is covered.
Yes, sir.
Yes. My name's Steve Silva. I'm from North Smithfield. Statistics can be misleading, and I've read something about that infant mortality statistic. I'm not sure if it's true. You guys are experts and provide a lot of good information. Maybe you can set us straight. What I had read was that you're not an infant, you're not labeled an infant for 30 days, that you're a newborn. And that because of that fact, the fact that in America, because of the technology and the medical stuff we do have, our most severe cases last that 30 days. Elsewhere in the world, you're dead. You're dead within 30 days. Just wanted to know, do you understand that to be true or not?
There's a lot to that, that we're not comparing apples to apples, certainly. Anybody else have a question that hasn't had a chance? I mean, we can, I'd like to get somebody who hasn't had a chance, if we can.
Yeah, Willie Wolfley again. I'd like to make a statement on healthcare. Our granddaughter's twins born at 25 weeks. They are alive today at three years old. Where else would that happen but in this country? So, statistics lie. I worked with statistics for 30 years in the business world. I could twist the statistics to suit my needs. And that's what is being done there, to make America look bad. So, I don't believe it. My sister-in-law over in Germany, my wife needed a hip replacement. She was diagnosed, she had her hip replacement within 10 days. My sister-in-law needed work on her shoulder. She had to teach for seven years until she was unable to raise her arm, that she finally got an operation. You wanna live over there with their statistics? Go. I stay here.
Well, my first comment, my first comment would be that I think that the video that you're gonna send to Patrick should also go to the Congress and to the Senate. And I also think maybe air-mail it to Copenhagen for our president that's over there at the moment.
Do they have a DVD player in Air Force One?
They probably have to convert it. I'm sure he has it on all the airplanes he has over there at the moment. But the one, the comment I would like to make is, and this is maybe just a short example, when you were talking about Medicare in other countries, my sister-in-law and brother have a summer home up in Canada, and my sister-in-law had a stroke. And so, she went to the local medical there in Canada, of course, they have their own American, you know, and they didn't have the equipment there for her to take the medical that she needed, the, I'm getting nervous, I'm sorry, the blood pressure cuff, and there was also something else. And her doctors suggested that they come back to the States to have the tests to take that she needed to have in order to, that she live. So, and I know of other examples of things that are going on outside of the United States. So, although there may be some things wrong with our system, I still think we have a better system, as the gentleman said, faster and quicker, okay? There's things wrong with it, no question about that. I think that's all I'm gonna say, 'cause I'm gonna get.
Thank you very, you did great. You did great. Come on up, Steve.
Hi. My name's Dave Kaplan from Cranston, and I appreciate everybody.
Thanks, Dave.
I appreciate you going against Kennedy. I'm kind of upset, as a citizen, a taxpayer, and a law-abiding person, that this guy can't show up. It really bothers me that he can't man up. And I'm tired of him riding his name of a Kennedy. What does it mean? You're born into a, you're born a politician? You're born to make controls on me and vote a cap-and-trade? When you can't even conduct yourself? It's bull crap. You should be hearing "man up." I'm tired of it. Remember, it's true, and you know it's true. You know, and everybody here, I see a gentleman with four kids in the Marine Corps, God bless you, wherever you are, and God bless your children. There's two, I see this country going to two different pots. You got a bunch of people going to Brown telling us how to live, and you got a bunch of people out here trying to work and make a living. And I see a lot of people here that already paid their dues, and you got a president basically cutting them at the knees. Where's the America I know? This ain't the America I know. I believe in the First Amendment and the Second. And my question to you is, it's two pots. Number one, what's your stance on the First and Second Amendment? And my second part of the question is, we heard on a radio show, that if the government passes the healthcare plan, that they could tell us, that the government can tell us to change the plan, or we go to jail. That was on a show, they were saying, like, if they pass it. And you know what? After what I see, and I'm 50 years old, what I've been seeing the last couple of months, it wouldn't surprise me.
All right, well, let me take your question in the order in which you asked it. The first part of your question is, where do I stand on the First and Second Amendments, all right? On the First Amendment, we're all here tonight because of my belief in the First Amendment. We all have a right to be heard. We all have a right to assemble and have free speech, and that's why we're here, and that's why I believe in the First Amendment. As far as the Second Amendment, you can look them up. My NRA rating's been an A ever since I've been in office.
And while we're on the subject of amendments, actually, Congressman almost-elect Loughlin had said, had asked, from the perspective of somebody who also analyzes the constitutionality of policies, kind of an interesting theory, that in a sense, you could look at an excise tax being applied to your, you know, your failure to purchase healthcare as being a penalty. The problem is that, you know, people are pretty clever, and the other thing you can do is basically write a bill that says, "Everybody pays excise tax, but we'll abate it if you buy health insurance." So, unfortunately, you know, there are ways around, and there's semantics, but, you know, to take Rush Limbaugh's phrase, you know, one step further, I mean, semantics matter. So, I think it's, at least it's good that we have a constitutional discussion. The constitutional discussion that I have noticed the most about this bill, and one that I think has some traction with people, you know, whatever way the court would go on it, is actually the Tenth Amendment question. And that's whether mandating people to buy insurance is really a power that's contemplated, you know, in terms of the government's power to regulate commerce. Now, you would say, well, you know, forcing people to buy something, that's a regulation of commerce, you know, we could force everybody to buy a car. But I mean, as a practical matter, if it's being done for, really, a police-power purpose, the protection of people, it really is, that would be customarily a state power. And you may agree or disagree with it, they've tried a mandate in Massachusetts. So, amongst constitutional scholars, the most, the most serious argument I've heard is that this really oversteps the bounds of federal power.
Does anybody else have any more questions that we don't take? Three more questions, and then we'll hang around, and if you wanna hear from us individually, then come on up with.
The constitutional topic is very interesting, and I think we probably could talk about it all night long. What provision in the Constitution is it that you think allows the federal government to do this? Especially, I think, when we're looking at the President telling us, "This is not a tax. They have the power to tax." You're right. The excise tax and abatement thing, very tricky, slippery thing to do. If they don't call it a tax, number two, the If they don't call it a tax, number two, the overstepping that they usually use to get their fingers into everything is the interstate commerce provision in the Constitution? Well, we don't have that here, we've, and I'm actually a little concerned about proposing interstate health insurance, because then that gives them the ability to reach in and then do guidelines.
Right. Well, it potentially gives them the power to regulate. In other words, federal regulation, if you had interstate sales, might be preemptive, or Congress could pass a law. So, while, as I did, there was a gentleman who was concerned, if we have particular mandates in Rhode Island we think are appropriate, or particular protections, yeah, it is conceivable when you have a more national market, that Congress would enact mandates, or would effectively, you know, preempt some state experiments, and that has happened with national markets. So, it's something that we should pay attention to. The real question, though, is the, is whether, you know, you know, really, it's a chicken and egg question. In a sense, regulating the kind of insurance that could be offered, if it was offered across state lines, there might be a federal power to do that. But is the power to regulate commerce the power to make you buy insurance? Right? And that, that is the, that's the, and look, I'm not saying, honestly, if you read, if you read a lot of the blogs, what they say is, unless the next election goes the other way, the Supreme Court is not going to overturn, whether it's, might be academically speaking constitutional or not, they're not going to overturn this kind of a program unless, you know, really, there's a clear statement from the electorate. In that sense, I look at the Supreme Court as a legislature with just a very long term.
Can we get, can we get one more question in tonight, and then we'll be around if anybody wants to come up and talk to us?
What I want to know is, is Congress going to have the same health insurance that they propose for us?
Not under the current law, no. Not under the current law.
That, I think we call a rhetorical question.
Well, ladies and gentlemen, first of all, I'm going to just introduce Mark Zaccaria for a minute, and then I'll wrap up, and we'll get you on your way. We'll be around here to talk to you individually, all you want. Mark?
John, thank you. Ladies and gentlemen, good evening. My name is Mark Zaccaria, I'm from North Kingstown, and I came over here tonight to support John and what he's doing. As you may have heard earlier, I'm running for Congress in the 2nd District, and so, gentleman from Cranston, let's talk later. The thing that I think that you should look at is what's going on here tonight. It is an example of the kind of a service that you should all expect from public servants. There were differences of opinion, there were things where corrections had to be made, but nobody had to throw rocks at anyone else, and you know what? We all come away feeling better. Ladies and gentlemen, that's what you want from your public servants, so you certainly want this guy representing you in the next term in Congress, and he's made quite a commitment. You, believe me, I know the kinds of things he's going through, you need to make a commitment too. Your commitment needs to be more than just to vote for this guy on second, it's money, it's sweat, it's folding and stuffing, it's being a volunteer, it's putting the bite on your neighbors to say, listen, you got to look at this guy because he's somebody you should think about. It requires an activist community to put a guy like John Loughlin into Congress, because you're up against a tidal wave of special interests that want to keep him out. So, if it's really going to be the people talking, let's talk John Loughlin, let's help him out. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Mark. Ladies and gentlemen, I think, I think the most important point here is that we held a town hall meeting, we were civil, we spoke with one another, we had a conversation with experts, we, in some cases, agreed, in other cases, we disagreed. But the most important thing is, I don't see any wave of crazies in this room. I don't see anyone that you should be cowering from in your office in Washington DC and be afraid to speak to. These are your constituents, Congressman. I suggest you come out here and meet them, they're wonderful people. Thank you very much, ladies and gentlemen.